Good evening. I call the York County School Board regular meeting to order for Monday, May 21st, 2018. This is our last regular meeting prior to the end of the school year, and we have a packed agenda tonight. So, I'll begin with asking our pledge leader to step forward while we read a little bit about him. So Logan Spencer is the president of the Mount Vernon Elementary School Student Council Association, and in this position, he has contributed actively to the school community. Logan led the effort to establish the first family dance at Mount Vernon this year, and has worked closely with his peers on the student council initiatives. He has demonstrated leadership by presiding over the student council meetings, but more importantly, he is a leader in the classroom and has a positive influence on his peers. Logan exemplifies the positive qualities and personal characteristics outlined in New York County School Division Character Education Plan. His teachers describe him as dependable and friendly, and they comment on his integrity. Logan's creativity and humor contribute positively to the classroom environment. As Logan prepares to transition to TAB Middle School this fall, he will be missed by his Mustang family. Logan, you have the floor.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Logan. That was great. So now, we're going to move into our seniors of the month, and the following students are being recognized for their achievements. Bruton High School, and that's Mrs. Haywood, you have.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I have the honor of introducing to you the May Senior of the Month from Bruton High School, Alyssa Arbely Smith. If you would stand, please. Alyssa, well, in her absence, I'm still going to read some information to you about Alyssa. Bruton High School is proud to celebrate our valedictorian for the class of 2018, Alyssa Arbely Smith, as our May Senior of the Month. Alyssa is not only an exceptional scholar having earned a 4.75 grade point average, but she is also a passionate leader. Alyssa notes that playing field hockey has been the most important activity that she has participated in during her high school experience. Her leadership and passion for the game has allowed her to develop her leadership skills. During the summer of her senior year, as the search for a field hockey coach continued near the start of the season, Alyssa activated her leadership proudness, rallied the players, and organized a summer practice schedule for the team. As varsity team captain, this was an opportunity for conditioning and preparation for the start of the season that she did not want her teammates to miss. Her leadership allowed the team to transition smoothly when the new coach was selected. In addition to her leadership on the field, Alyssa participates and serves as a leader for numerous clubs, activities, and honor societies at Bruton. She is a member of the Key Club, Chemistry Honor Society, French Honor Society, and is a Panther Achievement Leader for freshman students. Alyssa has received academic high honors all four years and was recognized as an outstanding student in Chemistry, French IV, Math Analysis, and AP Calculus. We look forward to Alyssa's continued success as she attends Duquesne University next fall. In her absence, please join me in congratulating Alyssa.
So Mr. Anderson, you have the next one.
Okay, I'm recognizing tonight Annie Chow. Would you and your parents, Young and Lee, please stand? We are pleased to recognize Annie Chow as Grafton High School's May Senior of the Month. She is a very dedicated student who is passionate about her studies and gives back to her community. One of Annie's passions is science. Annie is a member of New Horizon Governor's School where she studies advanced biology and environmental science. Annie is the president and co-founder of the Care Club Committee for the Aid and Restoration of the Environment at the Governor's School. With her dedication and hard work, they were able to raise $300 for the World Vision International Organization, which is an organization that works to help children overcome poverty and injustice. She spent the last four years volunteering at Mary Immaculate Hospital where she has worked in the prenatal area and the operating room preparing instruments for surgery. Annie also has a mentorship through Hampton University where she is conducting research on the SPOP gene, okay, and looking for mutations connected to prostate cancer. Annie has also a passion for music and has played the piano since she was five years old. She is a member of the Governor's School Music Club Ensemble Electique. She has involved herself in sports as well and played varsity tennis for two years. Annie has served as the treasurer of the French Honor Society, the president of the Math Honor Society, the corresponding secretary of the National Honor Society, and webmaster and treasurer for the Key Club. Annie has kept her academics a key focus during her high school years, and because of this, she will serve as Grafton's valedictorian this year. She has earned a 4.85 GPA and scored a perfect 600 on six of her SOLs. Annie plans to pursue a biology degree with a concentration in pre-med at the University of Virginia. She plans to attend medical school and become a family doctor. We are pleased to recognize Annie as Grafton's Senior of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. And Dr. George, you'll be presenting TAB High's Senior of the Month for May.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. This evening, I have the TAB High School Senior of the Month, Aaron Rodgers. Aaron? And you have some folks with you. Mom and dad? All right, welcome. As a stellar student and athlete, Aaron Rodgers, our May Senior of the Month, is a model for the ultimate scholar-athlete. She gives a performance of her life each day, not just when playing on our state championship field hockey team, but in the numerous roles she undertakes as an active student at TAB High School. Aaron maintains a 4.4 GPA while finding time to letter in field hockey in both indoor and outdoor track. She is a current holder of all-state first-place honors in the 4x4 relay and holds all-state honors in all other entered events. She was recently selected as the winner of the VIAA Young Blood Leadership Award and is a National Field Hockey Coaches Association Academic Team Member. Aaron has been selected as the recipient of the AXO Award for two years and is a member of six organizations at TAB, to include the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Key Club, and DECA. She is a longtime member of First Priority, and she has volunteered at the Peninsula SPCA Animal Shelter for the past two years. She is a student ambassador and a Special Olympics and Riverside Hospital Junior Volunteer. It is also worthy to mention that Aaron has maintained perfect attendance all four years at TAB High School. She is an incredible student, a dedicated and perseverant athlete, and an honorable ambassador for TAB High School. Aaron will attend George Mason University to study Family Studies and Human Development in the fall, where she will continue to shine. Aaron, congratulations. You make us very proud.
Now, I have the next student of the month, again, from TAB High School, but this is for the month of April. So Preston Klaar. Can you stand up? Your parents are also with you? Suzanne and William Klaar, thank you. So Preston gives the performance of his life each day, not just when serving as captain of the soccer or cross-country team, but in the numerous roles he undertakes as an active student at TAB High School. We are honored to present Preston Klaar as our senior class president and consummate leader as TAB High School's April Student of the Month. For the last two years, Preston has served as class president and vice president of both the Key Club and the National Honor Society. He serves many after-school hours coordinating events and school activities while volunteering in the community with COUTH, Youth Volunteer Corps, and Waters Edge Church. With a 3.764 GPA and little spare time, he is a year-round athlete, serving as captain of cross-country, track, and soccer, and is all-region and all-conference selectee in all three sports. This active young man consistently receives highest honors, and he will take his leadership and involvement to James Madison University in the fall, where he will major in marketing. Preston will be missed at TAB High School, but with a track record in leadership, JMU is receiving one of TAB's finest. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Medford, you have the next two.
Thank you, sir. Cameron Young from York High School for the May Senior of the Month, and your mom and dad are there. What about brothers? Did Brandon and Ryan make it? No, they did not. Okay. All right. Well, York High School is pleased to announce Cameron Young is the May Senior of the Month. She is a deserving student, has done so much throughout her high school career. Cameron has done well academically as an international baccalaureate student, and her passion for learning can be seen every day in the classroom. She has received highest academic honors every year and holds membership in the Spanish Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and National Honor Society. Cameron has dedicated her time to giving back to those in need and making a difference in the York community. She participates in the monthly food drives, youth groups, and visits retirement homes. She has also worked as a 4H camp counselor. Each year, her goal has been to make sure the campers have a safe yet exciting camp experience. The work that Cameron does is tremendous and admirable. Cameron is also an amazing athlete. She has run cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track for the past four years. In her junior year, she was awarded the York High School Varsity Award and received the Award of Excellence at the VHSL State Cross-Country Competition, and was also selected to the second team at the Cross-Country 27 Conference. This year, she serves as the captain of the cross-country team and has helped her teammates grow as athletes. Cameron is a rare gem at York High, and we can't wait to see what she accomplishments at the collegiate level. Congratulations. And I'm going to roll right into York River Academy. York River Academy's Senior of the Year is Kiana Mullins. If you will stand, and I believe your mom is with you, and I see the notes here. I think grandma is with you, aunt and uncle. Everybody can stand? Yes, absolutely. Get everybody on camera. Kiana is the unanimous choice as York River's Academy Senior of the Year. During her tenure at YRA, Kiana has grown academically, professionally, and personally. Kiana is an amazing young lady who is highly motivated with a strong desire to succeed. She has demonstrated her motivation through maintaining a strong academic performance, an active role in the YRA Greenhouse Project, and a part-time job outside of school. Kiana has demonstrated her technological and real-world skills by earning several certifications to include Microsoft Office, Adobe Dreamweaver, IC3, and Workplace Readiness Skills. Kiana is a natural-born leader who has a passion for helping others. She has taken a leading role in the YRA Greenhouse and is an integral piece to the project's success. She was nominated by her peers and teachers to fill this leadership position, and her classmates looked to her for direction and value her as a team leader. Kiana has conducted informational walkthroughs for the Greenhouse and has learned to fly the school's drone for publicity purposes. Through each of these opportunities, she has grown as an individual and is often our go-to girl. She is knowledgeable, dependable, and always presents herself in a professional manner. She has been a pleasure to teach and mentor at York River Academy. She is always looking for opportunities or looking for opportunities to grow and prepare for her future. Her infectious smile and warm personality has led to many friendships in the YRA community. The staff at York River Academy takes great pride in knowing that Kiana represents our school as the Senior of the Year. We are also thrilled that she will be taking her outstanding leadership skills to Longwood University, where she plans to study English as an undergraduate and pursue a master's degree in secondary education, and will be joining the ranks as a high school English teacher in York County Public Schools. Mr. Superintendent, make a note of that, please. We, along with so many in our community, we are very proud of her accomplishments. Congratulations.
And we're going to ask Dr. Shandor if he would step down front. While he steps down front, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards, and we're going to start with Mount Vernon Elementary School. And Dr. George.
Yes, thank you. This evening, I have the privilege of presenting the Student Service Award from Mount Vernon Elementary School to Lucy Cox. Lucy? I believe Ms. Bowles? There we go. We are pleased to recommend Lucy Cox as a recipient of the Mount Vernon Elementary Student Service Award. Lucy is a fifth-grade student who has contributed to the Mount Vernon community in a number of ways. Lucy is a classroom representative for student council and a member of the Battle of the Books Team, SWAT Team, and Recorder Club. Lucy's classroom teachers note that she is always willing to step in to assist peers who struggle academically. She offers a kind word, a smile, and academic assistance. Outside of school, Lucy plays soccer and swims competitively. She is a skilled pianist. In her spare time, she volunteers at the Norfolk Botanical Gardens, where she specializes in butterfly education. As Lucy prepares to transition to TAB Middle School this fall, we are pleased to recognize her accomplishments, and we wish her well. Congratulations, Lucy.
So our next Student Service Award is from TAB High School. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, we're recognizing Connor McDonald. Would he come forward and... Principal Angela Siders. From his service to our Corps of Cadets to his exceptional academics, Connor McDonald is the ultimate student who serves others. He represented TAB at Virginia Boys State last summer, and as a leader in our ROTC, he compiles hundreds of hours of volunteer service. Connor coordinates other troops in service as the Community Service Officer, captain of the orienteering team, riflery and administrative officer, and he instills this passion in younger troops. Connor is also active in 4H, volunteering an additional 200-plus hours to the local 4H camp program, having been selected outstanding 4H team for all of York County in 2015 to 2017. He is a state-level swimmer in freestyle, swims with a local swim club, lifeguards during the summer, and teaches young students to swim. He serves as a TAB student ambassador, is a member of the Beta Service Honorary, and spent last summer at NASA Langley Research Center volunteering with their research directory in programming. His leadership and volunteer service are unmatched, but what is special about Connor is that he instills this passion for service in others. With a 3.75 GPA, Connor will continue to service his service to others on a full ROTC scholarship to the Virginia Tech Corps of Cadets next fall. This tiger would truly be missed. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we're going to move into our Community Volunteers of the Month, and if I can get Kristen Bowles, the principal of Mount Vernon, to come up, along with Maria Hayman. Well, Maria Hayman is the mother of two and soon-to-be-three Mount Vernon Elementary students. She's an active volunteer in the classrooms of her children, but also contributes significantly to the larger Mount Vernon community. As a room parent, Ms. Hayman has planned, organized, created all the activities for learning celebrations. She has made sure that the activities has been an asset to our educational program. For example, she created eggs with math facts and had the students make tops with a STEM project. She mobilized volunteers and made a sign-up genius to make sure all stations and supplies were ready to go. She kept in close contact with the teacher and volunteered her time in the classroom to make sure the celebrations were successful. She has actively contributed to the Mount Vernon Elementary School Parent/Teacher Association. She has co-chaired the Hospitality Committee for the past several years in this capacity. She has made sure that the front office appears warm and inviting, and that staff members, teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, and other support staff are recognized throughout the year with fun treats, surprises, and lunches. This year, when she learned that the student council wanted to host a family dance, she immediately jumped into assist. Ms. Hayman met frequently with student representatives and school administration to plan the event, assisted in the preparations of food and decorations, and made sure that the event was fun for all families. We are grateful for her sharing her talents with our school and our community. Congratulations. And next up, Ms. Haywood, you have the next volunteer.
The Volunteer of the Month from TAB High School is Mrs. April Loquist. If you will come up, please, with Principal Angela Siders. Mrs. April Loquist is the parent of a current TAB High senior, ROTC cadet, and the 2015 cadet graduate. She has worked tirelessly for numerous TAB activities, but is most visible with anything to do with our ROTC program. Mrs. Loquist has been one of the biggest reasons for TAB NJ ROTC's success. As a mom who has had two cadets in the unit, she has been a booster mom, parent-volunteer coordinator for the past seven years. For five years, TAB was an NDCC operated only with only one instructor. April was indispensable in supporting all NJ ROTC activities each year. Her support includes coordinating orientating meets to Potomac River, Maryland, coordination and arranging volunteers for awards night, picnics, company formations, military ball, car washes, fundraisers, field trips, cadet emergencies, and cadet transportation to numerous events. Without April's tremendous and steadfast help, many of the events would not have been possible. Commander Wooten thinks that he would be lost without her assistance, and during the past seven years, her support for the unit influenced the unit achieving full status. Her commitment, support, outstanding leadership, hard work, and dedication make her one of our most special TAB family members. Her unwavering devotion, love, and patience to our cadets and students is a shining example for all to follow. April's countless days of support for our NJ ROTC cadets will forever have an impact on their lives and in communities well into the future. Please join me in recognizing April Loquist as the Volunteer of the Month from TAB High School.
So next, we have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Ms. Haywood?
I do, thank you. If Logan, our pledge leader, will come forward, our two Student Service Award recipients, Lucy and Connor, and our seniors of the month, Alyssa, and someone will take Alyssa's home, Annie, Aaron, Cameron, and Kiana. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Elbow Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Joan Fioka of Cookie Text and Elbow Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of the foundation supporter. Preston, I'm sorry. I thought I had underlined every name I needed. Forgive me. Presenting the gifts tonight is Mrs. Christina Head, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member. Congratulations, everyone.
Hey, Ms. Head, if you would just stay up here, because I'm going to be calling you right back. The Virginia School Board Association, in 2018, the Tidewater Regional Art Contest Award is what we have to present tonight, which is something we don't present all the time. So I'm going to have Meredith Reed and her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Reed, come forward, along with Ms. Progar, Seaford Elementary art teacher. Ms. Head's already up here. If they'll come to the front, while I'll share a little information relating to Meredith's award. On March 19th, 2018, students from across Tidewater competed in the Virginia School Boards Association Regional Art Contest. The VSBA Regional Art Contest was started in 1989 to promote artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine VSBA regions, a winner is chosen in elementary, middle, and high school levels. Mr. Anderson was our school board representative, and he took Meredith's artwork to the event, where she placed second place. We are pleased to recognize and congratulate Meredith Reed for this honor. She can now share with her winning artwork, so congratulations. Thank you. So next, we have a great program on our Accent on Academics, and I'm going to let Dr. Shandor to share a little bit about our Accent on Academics presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. This month's Accent on Academics highlights a collaborative venture between Yorktown Elementary School and York River Academy. YRA students and staff integrated standards-based instruction in unique and creative ways to develop student-led learning experiences for Yorktown Elementary students. To share more about this presentation and introduce the students and other presenters is Ms. Kelly Denny, principal, Yorktown Elementary School, and Mr. Walt Cross, York River Academy principal.
Mr. Richardson, board members, Dr. Shandor, and division staff and community members, thank you for the opportunity to share this wonderful partnership that we've been able to develop. Dr. Shandor referred to the five Cs that we're all coming to learn and love during our accreditation push. And so, it's really exciting to be able to take those kinds of things, that kind of like guide us in what we want to accomplish, and to put them in practice in real kinds of ways. So we're able to take some things out of the classroom, be able to present students with a problem, with some challenges, and be able then to help guide them through to a wonderful product and service that we're going to share with you a little bit tonight. So it's my joy to be able to introduce to you Operation Grow Change, and I'm going to introduce our, first, our science teacher, whose idea, I think it was, she took it and had run with us, Ms. Veronica Warwick.
Good evening. As Mr. Cross said, my name is Veronica Warwick, and I'm the science teacher at York River Academy. I wanted to start by thanking you all for having us here, and also thanking the team of students, teachers, and leaders that I've had the pleasure to work alongside, including those YRA Greenhouse members who are here tonight to show their support for us. Collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, citizenship, and communication were integral components for the successful planning, organizing, and implementation of the YRA Greenhouse field trips with Yorktown Elementary School. Throughout this year, the YRA Greenhouse team has been working with elementary students in Ms. Westland's Science Resource Class. While there, our students would help set up and carry out lessons as learners, as well as learn how to work with elementary-age students. They learned how to question students and what skills and knowledge they possess. Back in our classroom, Greenhouse members used the SOL curriculum frameworks to create hands-on and engaging activities. There was a great deal of problem-solving, creativity, and collaboration that went into the construction of the field trip lesson plans. Students worked together and helped each other modify activities and lessons to meet our overall goals. Ms. Norton and I acted as facilitators through this process, guiding them along in their journey and providing them real-world opportunities to learn about responsibility, pedagogy, and professionalism. This whole process has been a meaningful experience for our students that taught them the joys of teaching and patience for learning. Now, I would like to introduce my partner in crime, co-teacher, and High School Teacher of the Year, Jamie Norton.
Hello. I am Jamie Norton, the CTE teacher at YRA. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share this collaborative venture between YES and YRA. Last year, as we began the collaboration process with Yorktown Elementary School, the main question I sought to answer was, how can we use this opportunity to better prepare our students to enter the workforce and be successful in their chosen careers? As an educator, I know the technical skills and concepts can be learned and measured. However, the same cannot be said for soft skills required for a successful career. These skills require practice, and students must take owner- These skills require practice, and students must take ownership of their learning to master. Our students research standards of learning, communicate with YRA and YES teachers for advice and direction, and then create, practice, and implement lesson plans for kindergarten, first, and fifth grades. In preparing for the elementary field trips, our students must work as a cohesive team with strong work ethic, offering constructive feedback throughout the process. Students also learn to think creatively and critically, solve problems as they arise, and effectively manage time to meet deadlines. Throughout this process, we actively discuss and provide feedback for improvement of the 21 workplace readiness skills the VDOE has defined. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Team Leader for the Greenhouse Project, Kiana Mullins.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Kiana Mullins, a Team Leader of the YRA Greenhouse Project. As a Team Leader, I oversee the planning and making of the lesson plans for our field trips. We realized that in order to develop successful activities for the kids, we needed to first establish a base of what we wanted the experience to be like, while keeping in mind that not every kid learns the same. For instance, a fifth grader isn't going to learn the same way as a kindergartner and vice versa. This started the research process in which some of Greenhouse students found the necessary SOL objectives that need to be covered in our activities for each grade level. We also write about how to use academic language correctly for each grade level, like what words are strong points and which ones would be too hard for them, and then finding a good medium. From there, we all brainstormed a multitude of fun, hands-on, and interactive activities that would give the York Elementary School students an engaging adventure that they could then apply to their end-of-year testing. After writing field trip proposal forms and presenting them to the class, the ideas were narrowed down, and we started building the lesson plans. I really enjoyed collaborating with my classmates, generating new ideas, and figuring out how we can provide the necessary tools for success in these activities to ensure the best educational takeaway and experience for the YES kids. Being able to create lessons to help each grade level review the material made me understand how much a teacher impacts a student and their learning abilities. It was very eye-opening to me to work with different ages. I learned that making our activities hands-on and visually involving really catches their attention and makes information stick, whether it was a first or a fifth grader. During the very first field trip that the Greenhouse class hosted, there was this one student who really showed me the joys of teaching. At the end of the trip, one of the girls in my group hugged my legs, smiled up at me, called me the best teacher ever, and proceeded to say how much fun she had during the field trip. I realized how amazing it is to be in the position to help someone learn something new, and these events helped to pursue me, to helped convince me to pursue a career in teaching. Now I'm enrolled in Longwood University as an English Secondary Education major, and I plan to go back to school to earn a master's degree in education. I would like to share this experience by showing a short video of the YRA and YES field trip earlier this year for fifth grade, and after Ms. Barbara Westlin, we'll continue the presentation.
My name is Barbara Westlin. I'm the Science Resource Teacher at Yorktown Elementary. This has truly been an extraordinary experience for our students at YES. As Ms. Mullins explained, the students from YRA came over and co-taught with me in the science lab several times at each grade level in order to get a clear understanding of the cognitive level of the students they would be working with, and get a really good idea of how to question those students and work with them in a productive way. The YRA students helped to create level-appropriate activities that were aligned with each grade's SOLs, and really brought the plant life processes to life for those kids so that they could understand and retain that information. We have a couple of our YES students with us tonight that would like to tell you a little bit about their experiences. Aiden?
On my trip to YRA, I remember having lots of fun. Learning about plants, I liked. Learning about plants, I liked when we were beside the plants, and we played games to learn. We sorted pictures to learn about the parts of plants, like stems and leaves. I like when I get to learn about things in real life instead of just doing work at my desk. Visiting YRA helped me learn a lot about science. Next is Aiden.
My favorite part of our trip was making butterflies out of popsicle sticks that were painted on, like smelling the plants. One smelled pretty gross, but the other ones smelled good, like. I used to have a misty plant in my garden. We learned about seeds and apples and lemons. After, we picked them out of the fruit, we matched them. I learned, like, going on a field trip to learn science, because I love science. I can't wait to learn more science at YRA on my field trip this week. Next is Naya Warrior.
During our field trip to YRA, I got to experience learning firsthand, and it helped me understand better. I liked that we got to see all the things that we were talking about in science, like food chains, and I started to make connections in my head. I moved to Yorktown Elementary this year, and I felt like the other kids had a head start in science. The field trip helped me gain the knowledge that I missed at the beginning of the year. My favorite part was when we got to play a game on the floor with food chains and niches. We got to make a diagram and then play a game based on what we had learned. I thought the greenhouse was really cool, because I got to see some plants that I haven't seen before. Now I can recognize them on my own. Next is Yenely Rodriguez.
Visiting YRA was a good experience for me, because I think it is better to experience things in person than on paper. It's more interactive. My favorite part of the field trip was when we went into the room with all of the microscopes. There were trays with cells, and we got to see the cell in real life. The greenhouse was really nice for me, because I'm interested in gardening. It was interesting to learn about how plants are unique and how to identify them. I learned that the green lighting actually helps plants grow. I thought it was cool for the YRA kids to teach the stations, because they gave examples that we could relate to, so we could understand better. Visiting YRA has helped me learn what I need to know for my science SOL test, and it helped me understand things that are hard to learn from a book. Ms. Denny will share now.
Good evening, everyone. Without a doubt, this project has been one of the most engaging and rewarding experiences of my 20 years in education. At the foundation, our students benefited from real-world instruction that was strategically aligned to target science strands where data shows that we have the most opportunity for growth in our school. Our students explored science through hands-on activities, and the content was explained in a way that was easily understood by them. Beyond that, YRA and Yorktown Elementary have built a partnership that expanded the walls of our classrooms. York River Academy students inspired YES students to be excited about science by becoming experts in content and confidently sharing information in small groups. We're grateful for the opportunity to work with YRA and look forward to continuing our partnership for years to come. Thank you for allowing us to share this exciting partnership with you, and at this time, I just wanted to invite our students back up in case there were any questions.
So I asked the board if they want to start. I guess we'll start down at the end with you, Mr. Medford. Questions or comments?
This is just another one of those wow moments that are really bring it all together. You know, the days a long time ago when, you know, an elementary school or a middle school or even a high school did their own thing, and there wasn't really a lot of connection between the schools, even though everything was in one district. One thing we're starting to see more and more of is this example right here, and that's where a high school, our York River Academy, has taken a project that's benefited their students so well, and now they're sharing it as a classroom experience for the young folks to maybe one day walk into and do something similar. So it's a fantastic opportunity, and I'm just proud to have them in my district, so I'm very happy. Great presentation from all of you. Thank you.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, so any chance I get to support YES, I take. So I got to visit YRA during this time. I think it was the first graders were up there when I was up there. I got to see Ms. Mullins in action. The two gentlemen on the fourth row, the one sitting by the Teacher of the Year, could you stand? And the young man with the glasses? Yes. Yeah. So when I went, they were teaching first graders herbs. They couldn't quite get them to understand the lemon balm, but they got there. But what was amazing was their patience with the first graders and the way the first graders paid attention, you know? And I got to tour the greenhouse, spent some quality time with Mr. Cross to match Veronica's passion at YRA, whom I met, was Ms. McKenzie Zabicki from YES, who's a science teacher in the first grade. So, you know, I walked away from there just feeling good about the state of our education within YCSD, and I would like to see this as a blueprint to challenge the other high schools to do the same thing at some level. So kudos. I enjoyed spending time at your school. You guys were awesome, and I'm really happy that you're in our district, so that's great. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Haywood?
Not only in that district and our school division, so you all can't claim them all, but it's a wonderful program. The interaction between the two schools is wonderful. Kudos to you. Much success in the future. And I want to know of the presenters of the Yorktown Elementary students, who's up for yard work this summer? Anybody going to do yard work? Uh-uh.
I think I have a special place in my heart for YRA and Mr. Cross and your whole team has done. I just appreciate so much what you do there and your heart and passion that goes into that. And, you know, this is just an example of how people affect our lives, and people are influences in our lives. Real often, it's an older person, meaning YRA versus YES. You have no idea what impact you're having on these kids. I mean, you yourself, you're going to be a teacher now. I mean, but it's just, we can never underestimate the influence that we have on these kids, and I just think that's what makes the world go around, and that's what keeps things going. So thank you so much for everything you're doing.
And it's tough to go last, because you've said all the right things, all the things I wanted to say. I mean, you hit them on the head. And Mr. Medford, I think I do cover some district in York, and I go to Grafton, I go all the way to TAB, so mine's kind of an all-encompassing district, but we're all taking credit for this one, because it's a great program. Now, really, I do remember when the greenhouse was purchased through some talks in financing about the purchase, and I think it was through a grant, grant funding. And then when I took my tour of YRA last year, I remember talking to Mr. Cross and, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to have the elementary school kids come down. They were all excited about it, pumped up, and then I got to visit last week. And I visited when they were doing the kindergarten, students were there, and boy, did they have some patience. But they did a phenomenal job, and to see teachers teaching students and then the students teaching the students, what a great program. So Kiana, Dr. Carroll, can you raise your hand? That's our HR director, in case he wants to do an early contract, okay? Okay. But thank you. It's a great program. Continue the great work. Thank you so much. So the board's going to take a short recess, so we can come down and meet some of the award recipients before we continue the meeting. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. We're reconvened, and we're going to start out with unfinished business, which we have none, and then we're going to go into, oh, we're going to pass that, too. We don't have a construction report this evening. So we're going to move into our public comments by citizens. Our first hearing is on proposed school board salaries for FY '19. I know opened up the public hearing for school board salaries, and there's no one signed up to speak for that public hearing, but for the next one, there are, so we're going to, no one's going to speak for that. We're going to close that public hearing. And then we're going to move into the public hearing for participation in board meetings. The school board provides a public comment period to the public for comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker to be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that the speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not one individual school board member, nor the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer will be visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. As a reminder, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting or hearing, and I'll call up everyone that's signed up to speak, and we're going to start with Pam Pouchot. You're the first speaker signed up. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Pam Pouchot. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown. I want to thank Chairman Richardson for meeting me and answering my questions on school safety and what our school division is doing to make our schools as safe as possible. He spoke about adding SROs to middle schools, finishing the vestibule office renovations, and possibly adding more psychologists. This might make us feel more secure, but how much more secure will it really make our schools? The House of Delegates has created a House Select Committee on School Safety. This committee will discuss mental health and school infrastructure, but is forbidden from discussing firearms. The Santa Fe, Texas, school shooting was the 22nd in 2018 and the third in just seven days. The news no longer covers all shootings, especially if only one or two die, or if there are no fatalities. It has become all too common and not so newsworthy. The median age of a school shooter is 14; the average age is 17. They are male students attending the schools they attack and are usually suicidal. They are already inside the school and don't care if they're killed. Arming teachers is not the answer for too many reasons to go into now. Legislation is a step in the right direction. The easy access to firearms is a major factor. We must have comprehensive, universal background checks, require child locks on guns, ban large magazines and assault-style weapons, enact red flag laws to allow emergency removable firearms from those in mental health crisis, raise the age to 21 for firearms possession, make it illegal for a student to possess a firearm on school property in their vehicle, and create a three-day waiting period for gun purchases. Remaining silent is the same thing as consenting to the status quo. Contact your legislators on a regular basis, educate yourself on how a bill becomes a law, then write that bill and ask your legislator to introduce it. Demand your school board not remain silent. The bottom line is, what do you cherish more, your guns or your children? We all pray it is never our child who is the shooter. As parents, it is not your job to be your child's best friend. You must know with whom he associates, where he goes, monitor his social media, and regularly search his room and belongings. Listen to him. Encourage communication. Eat dinner with him. Find out if he's a bully or a victim of bullying.
The Santa Fe, Texas, school shooting was the 22nd in 2018 and the third in just seven days. The news no longer covers all shootings, especially if only one or two die or if there are no fatalities. It has become all too common and not so newsworthy. The median age of a school shooter is 14, the average age is 17. They are male students attending the schools they attack and are usually suicidal. They are already inside the school and don't care if they're killed. Arming teachers is not the answer for too many reasons to go into now. Legislation is a step in the right direction. The easy access to firearms is a major factor. We must have comprehensive universal background checks, require child locks on guns, ban large magazines and assault style weapons, enact red flag laws to allow emergency removable firearms from those in mental health crisis, raise the age to 21 for firearms possession, make it illegal for a student to possess a firearm on school property in their vehicle, and create a three-day waiting period for gun purchases. Remaining silent is the same thing as consenting to the status quo. Contact your legislators on a regular basis, educate yourself on how a bill becomes a law, then write that bill and ask your legislator to introduce it. Demand your school board not remain silent. The bottom line is, what do you cherish more, your guns or your children? We all pray it is never our child who is the shooter. As parents, it is not your job to be your child's best friend. You must know when, with whom he associates, where he goes, monitor his social media and regularly search his room and belongings. Listen to him, encourage communication, eat dinner with him. Find out if he's a bully or a victim of bullying. Talk to his teachers on a regular basis, be an active participant in his life even if he tells you to stay out of his business. Give him structure. Is he depressed or really angry? If so, give him profession, get him professional help now. Lock up all firearms in your home, ask his friends' parents if they lock up their firearms. You, the parents, have the power to prevent tragedy. In 1999, after Columbine, the US Senate passed a comprehensive gun control bill and the House killed it. The last 19 years have resulted in thousands of dead children. How many more must die before we stop this carnage? I urge this board to demand the General Assembly and Congress enact sensible gun control legislation to protect our children and our schools, and I will vote only for those who will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchot.
Can I make one little, that thing should not start until after we've said our name and address.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
We'll work on that. Thank you, Ms. Pouchot. And next up, our speaker is Bob Seifert. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Bob Seifert, 104 Chow and Turn, Yorktown. Superintendent, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak and school board members. I'm here to talk about recess with the kids and increasing it. I'm sure you're familiar with the recent state law allowing 15% of instructional time to be counted as recess, so that doesn't even include the 20 minutes they're already giving them, so we could give them quite a bit more, 30 to 45 minutes at a maximum. I'm here to advocate for two 20-minute periods. I have three boys at Mount Vernon, so with boys, it's especially important for me, and it really became a passionate topic for me when we came back from Germany as an Air Force family. And my, my boys went to German public schools, speaking German with German kids, and so that's what we first got introduced to. And there in Germany, countrywide, 80 million people, they go to school, first grade to fourth grade, for four hours a day. Four hours a day, 40 minutes of recess. They have a 20-minute period and then two 10-minute periods. They have P.E. every day, they learn a second language, they take the basics, and, and you'll still see them, you live across the street from the school, you'll still see them every hour doing laps out there. The teachers realizing the value of exercise for young children. And it's very obvious to me, the three young boys, they cannot be in the house for seven hours. And so it's just painful to, to send them to school knowing they're there for seven hours. Hopefully, they get 20 minutes of recess if the weather's good. And the only way that I'm able to, you know, cope with them and, and feeling like I'm raising them to be healthy is I've got them outside 30 minutes before school, the day, the second they get off the bus, they're, they're playing, you know, free play, and then they're doing two, three sports a night. That's how I keep my kids healthy, but not all kids are as fortunate as mine, and so I'm here to speak for them also. Germany is one extreme. And four hours makes sense for instruction when you're talking about little kids. Try to imagine taking a five, six-year-old. Would you really take them for a day and say, hey, I've got six, seven hours of information I'm going to try and put in their little brain? It, it doesn't work. Four hours is, is really more that logical time. And, you know, we give them to you for seven hours, please give my, my six-year-old, my, my nine-year-old, my 11-year-old more than 20 minutes outside is, is what I ask of you. In the military, I'm, I'm a retired Air Force pilot, have trained hundreds of pilots, thousands of hours, flying in the air, on the ground, training them, and you really, you know, learn what it takes to, you know, to reach people, and longer is not necessarily better. I feel like we're, we're working harder, not smarter. So I really think about kids. I'm also a York County substitute teacher, and the things I see thinking back from when I was a kid, and now I, I just see all this energy. I'm, I'm there in the lunchroom and it's just like they're pinging off the walls and they're shrieking, and it, it doesn't have to be that way. You need to, you need to get them some more exercise and I please ask that you at least give them two 20-minute periods in the morning, in the afternoon, you're going to see better discipline from the kids, academics, and they'll be healthier. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Melissa James. You could state your name and address, please.
Melissa James, 103 Piankatank Turn. I attended a school board meeting last year to speak in favor of later start times for teenagers. Today, I am here again to promote healthier schedules for York County students, but this time, the younger ones. I have two children who attend Mount Vernon Elementary. As you know, Virginia last month passed a new law allowing school boards to expand recess by including unstructured time in up to 15% of total instructional hours. Prince William County has already announced that they will be doubling their allowed recess per day to 30 minutes. It's time for York County to do likewise. Currently, my children receive just one 20-minute recess per day. I ask you to add a second recess of similar length. Recession is key to child development, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, boosting their social, emotional, and cognitive skills as well as physical health. Also, you'll love this, it can improve test scores. Studies continue to show that children are more focused and retain more information when given additional time to run and play. Japan and Finland, whose schools repeatedly outperform the US, give their children a 15-minute recess every hour. An elementary school in Fort Worth recently tried giving four 15-minute recesses per day and was amazed at the improvements in student achievement. You're trading quantity of, quality, quantity of time for quality of time. This is a low-cost, high-impact change. Our children need at least 15 minutes of unstructured time outside at least twice per day. Let's make it happen for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Ms. James. Okay, at this time, if there's no other speakers, we're going to close the public comment period. And before I move on to matters by the board, we have a scout that's in the audience back there. Could you stand up for just a second? It's Kayden Mudd. Is it Troop 200 you're from?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what badge are you working on tonight?
Communications merit badge.
Excellent. Communications merit badge. Well, good luck to you and I knew you'll do well. So thank you for attending our meeting tonight. Thank you. So we're going to move over to matters by the board and I'm going to start, have you first, Mr. Medford?
All the way down this way.
All the way down.
Okay, well, the only thing I just want to say to everybody is graduations are around the corner, and as we wind down the school year, it's hard to believe we're finishing up 2017, 18 here, but wish all the graduates a fantastic finish and all students for that fact in YCSD. Look forward to the graduations coming up around the corner and have a great summertime because I don't believe we'd go back on camera until August after this.
That's correct.
So, that's all I have.
Mr. Anderson, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so zoned out tonight. It's crazy.
It's been a long day.
Yeah. So aside from attending York River Academy, I hosted a teacher breakfast at Coventry Elementary School during Teacher Appreciation Week, if for no other reason, just to show my appreciation for what they do for our children. So I've been pretty busy with that. I too am looking forward to the upcoming graduations and everything. Aside from that, Dr. Shandor, if possible, for the August work session. I would like a presentation or maybe a report regarding the feasibility of increasing recess times based on the current schedule. Hopefully, that will be early enough to where if it is doable, we can go ahead and make that happen. But other than that, I don't have anything else for you.
Ms. Haywood?
Can I take their time? First of all, we are all looking forward to graduation. We all have had the opportunity to participate in some town hall meetings. I was at Bruton High School, and while you anticipate to talk about a number of topics, we only got to three. And the three were parking fees, start times, and dress code. And they were very passionate about all three. So I, as I said to the, the other board members and to Dr. Shandor, I think some things we need to leave up to the principals, especially with dress code, because we've tried to leave it very loose so it wouldn't, so principals would have some leeway, but I would take from them. The principals, any recommendations as we look at our policy for the future, just how that worked? But again, it was interesting just to hear the students' take on, on those three topics. Next, I attended the NAACP Annual Banquet. Mr. Fox and, and who is one of our own, Reggie Fox, Dr. Butler in the back were instrumental in that program. And you think about using the youth of the NAACP and some of our students. And the theme that year was standing on the shoulders of giants. So you look at those people who have been very legendary in the efforts in the community and the students recognizing them and, and presenting them. That was a wonderful opportunity to, to share. We had our own employee banquet in recognition, and again, thank you to all the employees of the school division who are integral part of what we do every day. And congratulations to those who won special awards, to those retiring, much luck in the What can I say about Santa Fe other than we're just blessed that it wasn't us? It could be any school division across this country. So what do you do? We have so many ways that we can address it. Know your kids, put an end to bullying, be cognizant of, cognizant of mental and social issues. But it's a trifecta effect. You've got school, family, and community. We all need to work together and know our students, be there to address any needs that come up with our students. Don't be afraid to say anything if you see anything out of the ordinary. Oftentimes, as much as I hate to hear about it, I always want to know if there is a, if people have identified the reason for it happening. And then I think back to our division. Have we addressed those issues? We, we hear people say our thoughts and prayers, and that's the only thing you can say is prayers when you're this far away. But you again pray that the senseless killing, especially in schools, will stop. But there are so many variables to it, you just can't say there's one thing to do to take care of it. And with that, I'm done, Mr. Richardson.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Great remarks. And Dr. George?
Yeah, let's take a moment to piggyback on, you know, your town, your town hall meeting experience and your words just, just now about school safety and school shape, school, the school shooting. We had two questions is all we got through. We got through the first one, I don't remember exactly what that one was, but it didn't take long. Got to the second question and the rest of the time was spent on that second question, it was school safety. The kids just, it just resonated with these kids. It was first and foremost on their mind. And, you know, my suggestion for next year is that we spend more time on that question with these kids. But thank you for your comments, Pam, and it is definitely something that has got to be at the top of our list for years to come. Couple other things from TAB. They had the NJROTC reinstatement ceremony on May 11th. Pretty exciting. For those of you that, that remember back in 2012, the program went from NJROTC down to the NNDCC, which is a great program, but it was because of enrollment, they went under 100. So, and what that means is basically you get no more funding from the Navy and you have one instructor now. This reinstatement just happened, everybody's excited, I think we're going to have two instructors, we're going to get the funding, so all kinds of great, great things. Commander Wooten is just a phenomenal man and does wonderful things with those, those kids over there, so kudos to them. The, just a couple of things. TAB received the Blue Ribbon, the music program received the Blue Ribbon Award just recently, which I thought was noteworthy. I went to the Spring Choral Concert at TAB. It's obviously over now, but the December concert that will be coming up, I, I, I don't know that I've ever seen a group of, especially the girls ensemble, a group of girls and kids that just enjoy that as much and quite honestly do, do raise to that level of, of expertise. And I, you know, Mr. Parr is, he is who he is and he's done it for years and, but all throughout the county, obviously, we have wonderful vocal groups, but, but TAB is one that I can tell you firsthand is worth going out and seeing. So remember that when the, when December comes around. On another note, New Horizons Regional Education Center just had a signing day and there were 37 students at New Horizons, everything from welding to auto mechanics to all the different trades that they have out there, signed them on the spot. People like Lieber, shipbuilding, new beginning shipbuilding, any others that come to your mind? But anyway, great companies, signed them on the spot. I mean, how exciting is that? It's just so rewarding to see that I participate on their Board of Trustees and their business board, so was able to be involved with, with that and, and aware of all that. So that's a wonderful thing. Just wanted to let you know that that's going, that's going on. Okay, finally, graduation schedule is on the website, so make sure you get the right time because that could really mess your day up if you get the wrong, the wrong graduation schedule. And the last thing is 17 more days. Seventeen. That's all I've got, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Dr. George. We always count on you to keep us up to date on the day.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate that, though. And for the town hall meetings, in case you don't know what they are, it's the students and the schools that come up with these questions and the school board or the school division at the school board office will tally up those questions and basically take the top ones, the top 10, and usually a school board member, sometimes a couple of school board members and a board of supervisors members go, and several of the student classes will come into a kiva, an auditorium, and the questions will be asked and we'll try to answer them for them. So that, that's what that's about with the town hall meetings, and it was very informative. It's always very informative for the students, it's informative for us. And Mr. Anderson was at, at Grafton, I was at York, so, you know, all the schools were, were covered. So I attended the 50th anniversary celebration for York Elementary School. What was interesting about that is there was a gentleman there that night that went to that school 50 years ago when it first opened. So they asked him the question, what's your most, most memorable experience about going to the school? He said, because it was new. Said, everything was brand new and he loved it. But it was really neat talking to him and learning, you know, what things were like back then, and, and they had a great celebration, so that was wonderful. Mr. Anderson was, was also there at that also. Attended the YMCA breakfast at the Marriott, that was an enjoyable occasion, got to meet a lot of community members there. Curious Savage played, the School of the Arts at Bruton, wonderful play. If you didn't go, you missed a good play. It was, it was a great play, they always do a good job. We had the Star Banquet, Ms. Haywood was talking about, where we recognized our employees. I also attended a groundbreaking for our new fire station to represent the board there and several of the school board staff were there on hand too. And that was an exciting time because the fire station's going to be like almost right next door to the school board office and, and Darryl Elementary School. I was able to ride some bus routes. I know we've had some transportation challenges, so I came out and rode the buses 6:30 in the morning and rode them through till, till 10 o'clock along with Dr. Shandor, Dr. Carroll, who was the other?
Dr. James.
Dr. James. So we were able to do that. And then I attended the bus rodeo this past Saturday, and I want you to know that we need bus drivers, come out and be a bus driver, because if Dr. Shandor can do that course out there at the bus rodeo, anybody can drive a bus. So, but we do need bus drivers.
You going on, you going to be a bus driver, substitute bus driver? No, no, you, Mr. Richardson, you going to be a substitute bus driver?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't even attempt it. But it, it was definitely a challenging course for those bus drivers. Really interesting, it's always open to the public. It's, it's a great time. They had a lot of things for the kids to do there too. So that was, that was a lot of fun. But that's going to conclude our, our matters of the board. We're going to move into financial matters. And Mr. Anderson, would you like to discuss the financial matters at this time?
Yes, I would. We have a lot, so be patient. Significant expenditures for April 2018, payments for technology-related items totaled approximately $287,000, and there were payments to Sedexo totaling $325,000 for March food service operations, and payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaling $242,000. For revenues, state revenues through April 2018 are running about one and a half million higher than in April 27, 2017 due to the state's share of the VRS rate increase and salary increase. State sales tax revenue for, through April 2018 is about $578,000 higher due to an improving economy. Federal revenue for 2018 is down about $1.3 million when compared to April 2017, and that's due to the revenues not being received on regular schedule, so amounts will differ month to month due to the timing which the payments were received. But this figure is significant because in March, we were down 3.9 million, so we've received a significant amount of impact aid since then. For expenditures, instructional expenditures through April 2018 are about $2.2 million higher than 2017. Transportation expenditures through 2018 are $211,000 higher, and operations and maintenance expenditures through April 2018 are $217,000 higher than in 2017. And these increases are primarily due to additional positions added to the FY18 budget and the increase in salaries and benefits related to the average 2% raise for employees. increase in salaries and benefits related to the average 2% raise for employees. An increase in lease payments for copy machines contributed to the operations and maintenance increase. Significant changes related to the food service budget for revenues and expenditures, local revenues for Food Service Fund are about $42,000 less through April 2018. This can be attributed to the timing which revenues are received and posted to the account. Federal revenue is $98,000 higher in 2018 when compared to last year, and this is attributed to a slight increase in the federal reimbursement rate and student participation for 2018. Expenditures for food service operations through April 2018 are $116,000 higher than in 2017, as a result of an increase in food service salaries, benefits, and food costs. And finally, we have a resolution requiring the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. There are 18 items of the resolution, and this is Resolution 18-28, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the financial reports?
Move motion to approve financials?
Second. All right, Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve financial matters. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move into our consent calendar. I'm going to go over the list briefly, and then we'll take a motion to approve them all, if we can do that after that. Approval for personnel actions is on the list. Approval for donations in the amount of $6,748.18. Approval to authorize the division superintendent to execute a ninth annual addendum to the facility operating agreement between the County School Board of York County, Virginia, and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Virginia Peninsula, a non-stock corporation. Next is the approval for James E. Richardson, school board chair, to be nominated as an at-large candidate to serve for the Virginia School Boards Association, the VSBA Board of Directors. Approval for Resolution 18-25, authorizing school board chair, division superintendent, and the high school principals to apply for membership in the Virginia High School League for the school year 2018-2019. Consideration for meal prices for the school year 2018 to 2019. Approval for an international overnight field trip. Approval to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus equipment at public auction. Approval of the minutes from the regular and special meeting for March 26, 2018. And approval of Resolution 18-27, a resolution to approve FY19 property and liability insurance coverage. And approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar. So is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
So are there any questions or anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar?
I just want to say that we are pleased to nominate you to serve the at-large.
Thank you. I hope I get it, but it's just a nomination at this point. We'll see from here. So thank you. So Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Dr. George to approve the consent calendar. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. So next, we're going to move into approval of transfer funds between major categories, and I'll ask Mr. Shandor to make comments.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen, Chief Finance Officer, if he'll please come to the podium to make a few comments related to this topic. Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. The first item this evening for action is your consideration to approve the transfer of funds from major categories. School board policy allows the superintendent to approve transfers between line items. However, policy requires the board to approve to transfer between major categories. Those major categories would be instruction, technology, facilities, operations and maintenance, and administration, administration, attendance, and health. So this evening, we're requesting your approval to transfer a total of $500,000, which is a slight reduction than we did last year. $200,000 would come from instruction, $300,000 from administration, attendance, and health. And we're asking that those funds be transferred to, $350,000 to operations and maintenance for a number of maintenance-related items across the division. $100,000 for transportation to purchase an additional special education bus. And $50,000 to technology to support the replacement of computers, iPads, and school radios. Happy to answer any questions that you have. Last year, we did this in June. Well, we moved it up a month, because we're getting a new finance system, financial system. And our current financial system will close out on the 22nd of June. And so we'll have that final week, which is typically a busy week for us, all activity will stop. So that's why we brought it earlier this year.
Thank you. All right, if there's no questions, I need a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve the transfer of funds between major categories. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
So next, we have a consideration of a motion to approve cash-funded projects. Appendix A, finance from the end-of-year fund balances for the school division, $100,000, and county $750,000. Mr. Shandor, if you'd share?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. If you, board members, if you recall at the work session, Mr. Bowen shared some brief comments related to this. He's going to expand on those this evening.
So staff, again, is requesting your approval authorizing the use of fiscal 2017 end-of-year balances from the county and school division for cash-funded projects to occur this summer. At the end of 2017, we're very fortunate in that the county provided the school division with an additional $750,000. And with, added to that is our end-of-year balance. We added another $100,000 for those projects, bringing the total to 850,000. So the list of projects are in Appendix A, but they do include security vestibules at Dare and Seaford Elementary, as well as Bruton High School, new PA systems at TAB Elementary in Grafton-Bethel, sidewalk, and curb repairs across the division. If you also notice, at the bottom of the list, we've included a 3% contingency, and that's 3% on the total fund, to give us some flexibility, because what we're seeing right now, because of the approving economy, we are seeing higher costs come in for our projects. So we wanted to give ourselves just a little bit of cushion there in case one or two of these projects came over, over what we had initially budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the board?
If I may, and I looked at the transfer body and looked at this list. For Bruton High School, that's security vestibule. It's going to be something added in addition to being buzzed in now?
Yes. So if you recall, when you go into Bruton High School, you go in, and then when the doors open, you have to, you get access into the school, then you have to go into the office.
Right.
What's going to happen is when you go into the first vestibule, Dr. James is going to cut a hole in that wall, or someone from the hire is going to do that.
And go into the office. Okay.
Correct. So it's going to go straight into the office, and you have to come back around.
Thanks, thanks. Okay. Dr. James is going to...
He's a big chainsaw.
Can you let us know the date you plan on doing that, Dr. James?
So can I have a motion in a second for approval then?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
A motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the cash-funded projects. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
All right, next, we're going to have consideration of approval of Resolution 18-26 to continue the salaries of members of the York County School Board. And Dr. Shandor, if you'd share comments?
I don't have any comments for this topic.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion in a second?
A motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve Resolution 18-26. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And if I may, this, the salary is the same as it has been for...
13 years.
Right. And it's the same for both the school division and the county board of supervisors.
County board of supervisors, correct.
We said, no, we don't go higher than the board of supervisors. So it has been this way for a number of years.
Okay. So next, we're going to move to a motion to authorize the purchase of the York County Dare Program supplies at a total cost of the division not to exceed $4,000. And if the cost exceeds $4,000, the Dare Program will reimburse the school division any amount above $4,000. That's an agreement we have, I believe, with the, through the sheriff's office. So Dr. Shandor, if you would share comments about that motion?
I don't have any comments about this one either.
About this one either, okay. Just want to ask you to make sure.
When I do, I'll intervene. No problem.
So is there, is there a motion in a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Anderson to approve the motion for the Dare products. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Sandy, Mr. Medford had the motion.
Oh, Mr. Ed.
It's okay. It's Dr. George can have it.
Just give to somebody.
Just want to let you, for the record.
Thank you.
So next, we have no policy discussions, no first reading discussions, but we do have second reading actions. Second reading on the quadrennial review of Section J, Students of the York County School Division Policy Manual. So Dr. Shandor, do you have additional comments?
I do, Dr. Richardson. So I'm going to ask if Dr. Butler can please come forward. There have been some changes since first read. So I'll have Dr. Butler share those with the board.
Mr. Richardson, members of the board, before you this evening, our revisions to Section J of your policy manual for approval. Since the first reading during the April board meeting, changes have been made to the document that you have reviewed prior to that meeting. I will take a few moments to highlight those changes. Those changes are underlined in the discussion section of the board brief and notated in blue in the J policy document. For file JFHA, prohibition against harassment and retaliation, language was inadvertently removed and has been reinserted concerning disciplinary action for students or school personnel who knowingly make false charges of harassment. For file JD/JGE, student suspension/expulsion, the Code of Conduct Committee recommended changing the policy to allow students to make up all missed work and assignments during a short-term suspension. This was proposed to hold students responsible for any work they had missed during the suspension and hold them accountable for their academic studies. For file JED, student absences/excuses dismissal, the deputy county attorney recommended a language change concerning the definition of joint legal custody. For file JFCB, sportsmanship, ethics, and integrity, the deputy county attorney recommended including the School of the Arts program located at Bruton High School as a Virginia High School League transfer rule waiver situation to align with similar special programs such as NJROTC and the IB program, which also received that waiver. For file JFCD, weapons in school, during the initial revision process, language from Virginia School Board Association policy was added to York County School Division policy JFCD concerning what constituted special circumstances for consideration when determining a disciplinary action. After review by the deputy county attorney, the new language was removed since the original policy language addressed the procedure for special circumstances. Finally, legal references have been updated in the document and are notated. At this time, are there any questions that I may answer for you?
I have a comment. But in regards to short-term suspension and the making up of work, thank you for that. My son, using him as an example, had a short-term extension in the fall. And we were told more than once that the teachers are not obligated to supply him with his work, his work, and a couple of teachers didn't. He missed the work and suffered. So thank you for making that a requirement, because it's also been a source of contention with some other parents in my district whose children have been given short-term suspensions. So thank you for that.
Okay. If there's no other, no questions, we're going to need a motion in a second to approve the second reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
A motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Anderson to approve the second reading of Section J. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
So now we move into the second reading of file DLC, expense reimbursements of the York County School Division Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor, additional comments from last month?
Yeah, there are no changes since the last reading.
Okay. I just have one question on that. When would that come into effect if we approve it tonight?
Let me ask Mr. Bowen to come to the podium.
Sorry for the last minute question.
That'll come into effect July 1.
July 1, that's what I thought.
In fiscal year.
Okay. And it's under the GSA schedule?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. I'm understanding everything. Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, we have a motion in a second to approve the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the second reading of file DLC. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
So next, we have report of the superintendent. Do you have something?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I know you would.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I wanted to echo a few of the comments that board members made. We had our employee recognition banquet. This is an evening that's devoted to honoring and congratulating those who received special awards in 2018, as well as our 25-year employees, as well as our many retirees. So I wanted to read a few of the names and award winners from that evening. So Michael Young, TAB Middle School, won the superintendent's award. Katie Gaylord from Waller Mill Elementary School won the Spirit of Education Award. Patricia Malino, TAB Middle School, won the Para Educator of the Year. Al-Sadine Rousseau, Yorktown Elementary School, a community outreach coordinator, she won the Support Staff Member of the Year. And as far as our Teachers of the Year at each level, Rebecca Cobb, McGruder Elementary School, for the Elementary Teacher of the Year, Jamie Buckley, Queens Lake Middle School, Middle School Teacher of the Year, and the YCSD overall Teacher of the Year, and Jamie Norton, who many of you got to see this morning, this morning, or this evening, sorry, we've been here for a while. From York River Academy, she's the High School Teacher of the Year. We also recognize, as I said, many members who celebrated 25 years consecutive service in the division. Another event I attended was the 2018 Outstanding Youth Awards Recognition. This was an event sponsored by the York County Board of Supervisors and the York County Youth Commission. We honored several of our local youth, including Joseph Helms from Grafton High School, Frederick Choi, Grafton High School, Justine Collier from York High School, and Rand Perry from Bruton High School. On Saturday, May 12th, I had the opportunity to attend the 21st Annual 200-plus Scholars Breakfast that was held at Virginia Beach Convention Center. This event showcases the best and brightest young African-American male high school students in Hampton Roads. We had several students recognized at that event, and a number of administrators who attended included, including Dr. Vladu, Dr. Butler, and several of our administrators at the high school level. In closing, I want to encourage our students and parents to remain steadfast and finish this school year strong. We have 17 days to go. We can certainly do this. And I know that the board has questioned my driving ability throughout the school year, specifically Mr. Anderson and Mr. Richardson. I will say that I scored quite well on, at the bus rodeo. So that concludes the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So our next meeting will be our work session, Monday, June 4th, 6:00 p.m. And we have nothing else to discuss tonight, so this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.